Evening, everyone. We'll bring tonight's city council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Presentations, our monthly sheriff's report. Peters.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I hope you all had a wonderful Thanksgiving, got to spend some time with your family. I'm Derek Peters, I'm our patrol lieutenant. Uh, October had a total of three hundred and eighty-six calls for service, which was significantly down from the four hundred and sixty-four reports we had in the previous month of September. Our deputies responded to two burglaries, four thefts, and three damage to property calls. Deputies made a total of six custodial arrests for miscellaneous violations in our traffic enforcement efforts resulted in the issuance of thirty-four traffic citations, which was a slight increase from what we saw in the previous month of September as well. Few notable calls that we handled, uh, in October. Uh, on the seventh of October at three o'clock P M., Deputy Lynch responded to a burglary report in the four hundred block of two hundred and eighteenth Avenue Northeast in our city. The reporting party reported finding, uh, evidence to suggest someone had been inside of the home. Deputy Lynch, uh, found forced entry on the building and noticed some pry marks and tool marks, uh, along the door jamb. He ultimately cleared the house and didn't find anybody inside. The reporting party reported a number of DVDs and firearms and ammunition that had been taken from inside of the residence. Deputy Lynch had our crime scene unit respond to the scene. Um, our detective there processed the scene, and that case is still pending. All of the stolen firearms and all that information have been collected as well and entered into our law enforcement database. Deputy Mo Broughton, on the twenty-fifth of October at ten fifteen P M., was dispatched to a residence in the one nine eight hundred block of East Bethel Boulevard on a report of a disorderly female out of control. On arrival, deputies located the female in question being held down by other occupants of the home. After securing the scene and interviewing everyone that was involved, deputies learned that an argument had taken place inside of the home that had escalated to a point where the female involved had to be restrained by, um, other occupants inside of the house. Deputies mediated the situation and determined there had been no physical assault. The female was cited for disorderly conduct and transported to jail to prevent further criminal conduct. On the twenty-sixth of October at nine fifty-five P M., Deputy Lynch received information regarding a male with multiple felony warrants driving a green passenger car near the area of Skylark and two forty-first Avenue in the city of East Bethel. Deputy Lynch responded to the area, observed that vehicle driving through the, through the neighborhood. He activated his overhead emergency lights and stopped the vehicle, which pulled into a nearby driveway. Deputy Lynch spoke to the driver, who was in fact the subject of the warrant information. That driver was arrested and transported to jail without incident. Finally, on the twenty-ninth of October at ten fifty-three, Deputy Madsen responded to a property damage hit-and-run accident on Highway sixty-five in Viking. On arriving, Deputy Madsen learned that the reporting party had been rear-ended by a blue and tan colored S U V which had fled northbound on Highway sixty-five. While Deputy Madsen was collecting information from that reporting party, he heard Deputy Mo Broughton stop a vehicle matching the suspect description near the two thousand block of two hundred and twenty-first Avenue Northeast. Vehicle had damage consistent with having just been involved in a property damage crash. Deputy Mo Broughton had the driver of that vehicle step out to perform standardized field sobriety testing, which, uh, he ultimately failed. The male provided a P B T, which is a preliminary breath test, which showed a preliminary B A C of point two-one. Uh, that male was arrested for D W I. The male later provided an evidentiary breath test, which reported a final value of point two-six. He was jailed for third-degree D W I and leaving the scene of a property damage accident, so. Um, that was pretty much our month, snapshot of our month. Finally, I noticed some frozen ice around some of our lakes. I don't get out as much as I used to, but just as a reminder for everybody, uh, Minnesota D N R is advising to stay off of any of our lakes until we have greater than four inches of ice. Uh, I know it's kind of tempting to get out there and maybe, you know, try for some fish or, or go out and skate, um, like I do in my backyard, but I had to, I had to pull myself off of that, uh, opportunity this weekend when I saw a little bit of that ice. So, just a reminder for everybody, um, please, if you see any, um, anything unsafe, call nine-one-one. We'll respond. I'll stand for any questions.
Council, any questions from Lieutenant Peters' side?
Derek, are you guys involved in this D W I enforcement, like the State Patrol and all the other, um, cities around here?
Yes, sir. We do the, uh, the T Z D, which is a towards-zero death. It's a statewide initiative. They, they pay for us to have extra saturation D W I enforcement throughout the holiday. Um, and we do it through the summer as well. Just kind of something that we've always done, so, you know, when people ask, I'm like, yeah, absolutely, we do, you know, absolutely. Um, it's, uh, it's always something of concern for us, and that's where we need to really hit it hard, where we need to focus our efforts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Questions from our audience for Sheriff's Department? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks, Derek. Onto our monthly fire report. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Um, that's the October monthly fire report. In the month of October, the Fire Department responded to seventy-seven calls for service. Of those seventy-seven calls, we had fifty-two medicals, four accidents, six alarms, eight smokes and, smoke alarms and, or smoke in the area, and two mutual aid calls for, I think one was for a building fire in Ham Lake. As of today, we have ran eight hundred and thirty-five calls for the year. That puts us fifty calls ahead of last year, right now. I do expect us to be at about nine hundred and ten calls for the, of service for the year when we finish at the end of next month. So far this month, I think we are at eighty-seven calls for the month, which is trending way higher than normal in that. That is about all I got, except, uh, I'm just going to remind everybody, if you get a real Christmas tree, please water it daily. And then, it takes about one quart of water for a six-foot tree a day to keep it fresh and that. So water daily, and as soon as you're done with it, dispose of it outside, recycle it, or something like that. And with that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy holidays and please be safe out there. Any questions?
Questions for Chief tonight?
How is, uh, staff keeping up with the uptake in calls? Is there enough staff?
We are running tight on staff right now. Unfortunately, this month, uh, the month of November, we got hit heavy on day calls and that. So, with, um, myself, Ben, and Artie there, we are able to respond in a timely manner. But as you all know, later on, that Chief Anderson has, uh, put in his resignation for December sixteenth. So, like I said, we're going to get a little touchy on the day side. But, yeah, we're doing all right, but we're going to have to look at something coming up.
Okay.
So I have a question. Last, uh, month, you had three resign, is that correct, three firefighters?
Last month, we had, yeah, there was three on the thing.
Have those been re- replaced yet, or are you working on it, or what's, what's that process like?
Um, we are working on, we have t- we had three that resigned last month, or not. Two of them were just cleanup items from previous, and then one was a resignation that had just resigned. We have hired two more, that was approved last month also, to start on December first. But, like I said, Chief Anderson is retiring in December, and I do expect one or two more to retire in December. So we're going to stay at a right around thirty people in that for our staffing.
What do you, what do you want to be staffed at, Rodney?
I'd like, I'd like to be at about forty.
Forty, okay.
Is that what you have slots for, is forty?
We are actually s- yes, I do believe forty.
Okay. Thanks.
And what's your current staff count?
Our current ca- staffing right now is thirty.
Okay.
We had two start in December will bring us, December first will bring us up to thirty-two. But I've got one for sure retiring, possibly two or, two more. So it'll bring us back down to thirty again.
So obviously, your city's recruiting, so if there's any interest in the Fire Department.
Yes. You know, Grove is also in the same boat we're in, trying to get people and that.
Okay. Any other questions for Chief? Questions from the audience? All right, thanks, Rodney.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Have a good day.
Okay, on to our consent agenda.
Uh, I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda. I want to pull item G as in George.
I'm second.
Okay, motion made second. Suzanne?
I'd like to pull item B and G also, and K.
D and K?
B as in Bravo, K as in Kilo.
Okay. And then, uh, I'd like to pull item C. Any other discussion? To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Item C, I wasn't present at that meeting, so I need someone to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item C on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain. Uh, item D.
B, Bravo.
I'm sorry. B is in boy. Good.
All right, um, that was the tabled minutes from what I said, and they still really didn't say what I said. I don't know why they don't want to quote me on what I said, but about the, um, Fire Department and the city worker and the Fire Department, working at the Fire Department. Anyways, uh, I think I was taken out of context on the whole thing. Uh, I know exactly who the person was, I have a picture of him on his phone, I knew he was a city worker. If I wanted to accuse a firefighter of stealing signs, I would have said firefighter. So anyways, I just, um, feel that having somebody try to convince firefighters that I was accusing them is, was a horrendous thing. So, with that, I will make a motion to approve item B on the consent agenda, because I'm not going to argue about those minutes anymore.
Uh, is there a second motion?
Second.
Uh, discussion? On item B, and, and maybe I got something different here. What, what does, what does that minute state? What's the date on top of the minutes?
October tenth, twenty-twenty-two. I believe.
It's very tough, it's October twenty-fourth.
Yeah, like mine says twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
And about halfway through, it has, two-thirds of the way through, it has red letters with what she's referring to.
Yep.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I've never seen modifications put in red before, but that's fine.
So these are October tenth minutes for approving. Is that correct?
No, October twenty-fourth minutes.
The consent agenda says October tenth.
So it's the agenda that's wrong?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. That clears it up. Any other discussion? Uh, hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain. Okay, that's done. Uh, G?
Um, I want to thank Artie Anderson personally. He'll have forty-one years in December. Um, Artie's started out as a fire chief here in East Bethel for ten or twelve years, I think it was, and then he went to deputy chief. Uh, he's done an outstanding job for the city. I mean, I mean, I can go on and on, and this guy is going to be tough to replace, he's been a tremendous asset. And I just want to wish him and Deb the best of luck when he retires.
Here, here.
And with that, I'll approve item G as written.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion?
I also want to, um, thank him for his service. That history is, and his knowledge is never going to be replaced. And, um, I, I've always sad to see somebody so brilliant have to leave, but I understand too.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes.
Item K?
Item K is, uh, for the purchase of a twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five plow truck. And I was looking up these plow trucks, and they say they should last for, um, fifteen to twenty years. And I just don't know if we really need to replace one this soon. Um, we just bought a brand-new plow truck last year, didn't we? And, uh, I don't even know, has it arrived? Has the one we paid for, the new one we ordered arrived yet?
Nate, you want to take care of this?
Sure. Yeah, they just took delivery on the one that was replacing a two thousand and nine truck for that one. So we have five, five snowplows, so this is the oldest one on the fleet right now.
Yeah.
They run on twelve-year cycle repl- replacement cycles, this will be out about fourteen years by the time it takes delivery on it, so. And we budget for that, we save up money, we actually have this money already saved in our account each year, so we're not borrowing for it, it's already been saved to purchase these trucks, so.
And what's the current condition of it?
That one is, probably has our most problems with it. It's, it's breaking down a lot. It's a lot of the issues we have are with our, uh, diesel exhaust, the DEF fluid on all these new, these new, uh, requirements for the E P A. That one's, that one's broken down more than anything else.
Uh, do you have an estimated amount that you spend on repairs for this vehicle every year?
No, I don't have a, off the top of my head, we have it all on a spreadsheet in the computer. It's all.
But it, it's definitely costing money.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So when you say it's breaking down a lot, what is going wrong with it?
A lot of it's, uh, exhaust fuel sensors, we've replaced, um, um, if, if you're familiar with the DEF systems on some of these diesel trucks, it has to go through regeneration, and, and once that goes down, it goes into what they call, it's like a limp mode, so the truck can't drive. It happens quite often on two of our trucks we have right now. I think they're getting better at it, but the two models that we have are, have the biggest issues with them.
And this replacement, is it going to have those same kind of sensors in it, or?
The new ones are, they've gotten better at it. They've, they've fixed a lot of these bugs on them, absolutely, and all the fire trucks have the same issues. We've got two, uh, one-ton trucks that have been down at the dealership since June. We haven't had them for, what, six months now? Waiting for just one filter for each of those trucks.
So we send them out to dealerships to be repaired?
These are under.
We don't repair them here?
These are under warranty, so it's being caught, covered by the dealership.
Okay.
Yeah, we do a lot of the work ourselves now, we have a couple of guys, a couple of our employees are really good at doing the work in-house.
But it's been there five months?
We have two trucks that have been there for five months, yeah.
There's, I mean, they're not here, they're at the dealership.
They're at, uh, Towesley Ford in White Bear Lake. And there's a whole parking lot full of them from all the other cities too.
And when it really stalls, what are they going to do?
We have enough trucks right now to, to work, but if one of these breaks down, we don't have, we don't have a backup right now for, uh, that's a smaller truck, that's our, the ones that do the cul-de-sacs in parking lots.
So the truck that's being replaced is, uh, when, when it is replaced, are we planning to put it on surplus sale? Or are we going to keep it for some other reason?
The one that's replacing?
Yeah.
So that one will go into our backup role, and the one that's currently in our backup will go for sale.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we expect any kind of resale for it?
Uh, they're going for between twenty and thirty thousand, a lot of them.
Okay.
So my next question is, why are we going for absolutely brand-spanking-new and not like a used one? Wouldn't that be cost-saving to us?
Um, I mean, there's, there's ways to look at that back and forth. The city gets government pricing on everything, so the price we pay is significantly less than what somebody would buy from, like, a private company. So then we, when we resell our stuff too, uh, we get to sell it at the market value, so we recoup a lot of that money when we sell stuff back, especially with, like, our smaller pickup trucks. We'll pay ten thousand dollars less than what somebody would buy, uh, coming in off the street, and then if we use them for a certain amount of time and resell them, we can capture some of that money. State of Minnesota takes trucks for three years. They get them at such a cheap cost, and they sell them after three years, and they get a lot of that money back, and they found that that's the most, uh, cost-effective way for them to operate their vehicle, their fleet. Keep them on their warranty, and when they're not the warranty, they sell them.
Generally, too, there is not much in the market for a good-use snowplow truck. Anybody that has one for sale is probably at the end of its useful life in terms of being able to operate economically.
Yeah, well, there's, if there's a vehicle that takes the most abuse, it's going to be the snowplows, so.
Yeah. The ones that are for sale are the same age as this one or older on the, on the state.
We'd just be trading out the same thing.
Correct, yeah.
And new vehicle gets a warranty.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And like, like Nate said, Mendoc's policy is to buy a truck and run it till the warranty runs out, and then sell it, and then their economic analysis, it's cheaper to operate that way. And they get more for the truck, there's no cost for repairs for the major stuff covered by warranty during that period. It's not something we're recommending doing, but, uh, you know, like this truck here, this is a two thousand and nine that we have.
This one that's being replaced? This is a two thousand and eleven.
Two thousand and eleven, well, by the time we get this new truck, the other, the other thing is, these things are a year and a half at least out. So you got to place your order way ahead of time, so it'll have thirteen, fourteen years on it by the time we get the new one.
I get that. So the new one, my final question. Is it, like, high-end, middle-of-the-class, basic? I mean, does it have all the bells and whistles that we're paying for, or are we getting a very basic one?
It's, I would say, pretty much a standard issue that the cities get. It's not the top end, it's not the bottom of the barrel either, I guess, either, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, with those questions answered, I will make a motion to approve item K on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made second, uh, discussion? Hearing none. To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Uh, that completes our consent agenda. Onto new business planning commission. Uh, item A one, concept plan for Hidden Pines Residential Development, East Bethel Boulevard, one hundred and ninety-eighth Avenue.
Thank you. Uh, Stephanie Hanson couldn't make it tonight, she's ill, so I'm going to pinch it in her place. Uh, this agenda item, as the mayor said, is the concept plan for the Hidden Pines Residential Development. The city council is going to be asked to review the concept plan for a ten-lot rural residential development. This property is located within the rural residential zoning district. Within the rural residential zoning district, the minimum lot size required is two acres, and all lots within the proposed Hidden Pl- Pines meet the two-acre minimum lot size. Each lot meets the required two-hundred-foot width at the right-of-way setback line. This development will, will be accessed from East Bethel Boulevard, which is County Road fifteen, and the Inoka County Transportation Department is required to review the final plat. The developer is required to abide by the requirements of the County Transportation Department, so comments from the Transportation Department will be presented when the preliminary plat comes before council. The internal street will be constructed to city standards, and a temporary cul-de-sac will be required with the possible extension of the road for future development to the west. Public hearing was held at the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. There were two residents that spoke at the public hearing regarding the placement of the road and how many of the existing trees would be removed. There was a consensus by the pla- by the Planning Commission supporting the concept plan as presented. The concept plan was discussed at the November fifteenth, twenty-two, twenty-two meeting, and the commission recommends ca- Parks Commission meeting, and the Parks Commission recommends cash in lieu of land for park dedication for this development. Based on the feedback received from the concept plan, the developer will modify the plans and make applications for the preliminary plat. Staff is requesting city council to discuss the concept plan and advise the developer of any adjustments to the plan as presented.
And Jack, this is just a concept plan, so it either, it does not either get, uh, approved or denied, correct?
That's correct. You're, you're just going to provide some recommendations based on what's presented. As to what you would like to see or recommend, any additions or deletions from the plan.
Okay, thank you.
So questions for staff on this item?
So are they going to try to keep as much of the vegetation as possible?
Yes. The developer's not here, but the answer to that is yes. He addressed this at the Planning Commission meeting, and there's not a lot of vegetation on the site. As you can see, here's the outline of the property to be subdivided. There's a long linear group of pines here where these orange areas are, this is where the street will come through. So those will have to be removed within the right-of-way limits. The rest of the trees will probably remain in place. Actually, this tree line here was almost on a property line. So when you look at this from the road, you'll only see essentially the first two lots here. The remaining eight lots will actually be behind these trees, and the visibility from the road will be very limited. But the street will come in here at this point.
Yeah. Tackle, Jack, he's correct. The developer did state that he wants to remove the least amount of trees as possible.
My other question is, um, a lot of the people who ride snowmobiles are a little frustrated with some of the developments, the one up off of two-thirteenth. Uh, they're worried that their snowmobile paths aren't going to be available anymore. And I'm not sure if they ride along on that side or the other side, but, um, do you know if the, the snowmobiles are going to be able to utilize that area, if that's, if they still do? I'm not sure. This wasn't one that they talked to me about, but they talked to me about the one, the other two.
Well, th- this is a concept plan, and that could be one of the recommendations that the entrance here be designed to accommodate snowmobiles. I believe that they can't have more than a four-to-one slope on the sides of this entrance. This is pretty flat here anyway, so it won't make any difference. The only issue would be with the, with the, uh, drain pipe that would go in here. And this isn't part of any county trail down through here that I'm aware of, two-thirteenth is. That's part of the county trail going from east to west across the city. So, you know, that could be a recommendation to the developer to consider making sure that that entrance could be crossed by snowmobiles.
Okay.
Th- this hasn't gone to the county highway department yet.
No, no.
So one of their, one of their responses that may impact a snowmobile tra- i- if there is one there is if, if the county requires it internally. So then they have to go more into the right-of-way, but that trail should be in the county right-of-way.
Yeah, it should be.
So.
Yeah, a- anything that there's going to be riding snowmobiles will be within the county right-of-way.
Okay, I have nothing else to add to this.
Any questions, comments? Straightforward.
Yep.
Okay. Is that it, Jack?
That's it.
Okay, on to, um, A two, the preliminary plat, planned unit development amendment for Elevage East Bethel Second Edition, Elevage East Bethel Holdings. Welcome.
The developer, Corey Burstead, has submitted the second edition preliminary plat for the planned unit development known as East Elevage East Bethel. The second edition consists of up to two hundred and twelve rental townhomes with a private clubhouse, a pool, public trails, and a lot for future commercial development. The submittal requires an amendment to the Elevage Master Plan Unit Development Agreement approved on May tenth, twenty-twenty-one, and a planned unit development agreement specific to the second edition of the development. Legal documents for the developer's agreement are being drafted and reviewed and will be approved by city council prior to the release of any final plat for the filing with Inoka County. The city attorney will be working closely with city staff and the developer's attorney to prepare the developer's agreement for council discussion on the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-twenty-two work meeting. Corey Burstead is with us tonight and will present an overview of the project and be able to answer any questions regarding the proposed preliminary plat. Corey?
Corey Burstead, owner of Elevage Development Group. Um, Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, we've kind of gone, you know, we started this back kind of prior to COVID hitting and stuff, and we're kind of back on the track, and as, as I told Planning Commission, you know, we've, we've kind of looked at the overall site plan and have made some changes along the way. We've done new market studies recently as well. We're actually undergoing another one right now, just with all the changes in the last, say, six months, and the marketplace has changed so dramatically with interest rates and stuff. And what we're being advised to by our, our market, uh, studies is just, you know, this is a need that's, we, there's a big gap uh, in this area for this type of housing. Originally, we had a, back in twenty nineteen, our original P U D plan, we had kind of just a long-running one neighborhood, uh, kind of a larger, as I call it, a raceway, uh, with the. Uh, kind of a larger, as I call it, a raceway, uh, with about forty some larger home lots and stuff. But as we got, working with the city engineer, our engineers and stuff, we're in a very unique, uh, setting here. Uh, so we've did all the wetland delineation and all the studies on it and stuff. We had, we have so much dirt to bring into the site and stuff. It's a big challenge. It's a lot, lot bigger challenge than a lot of people may understand. It's, uh, and so we kind of went back with, you know, the market study and everything going on. And then we realized that, you know, doing lots of basements and bringing in all this dirt to kind of elevate the site just didn't make a lot of sense economically. And as we've gone out and looked at the site and tried to figure out to the commercial end of it, you know, what everyone will always tell you is that you need some rooftops in order to, to attract. You know, we finished the first phase with QuickTrip. Um, and, uh, and I believe they're starting sometime in second quarter, uh, coming up. It's kind of what was on there. I know they got kind of bumped around with COVID, all their construction time was moved around and stuff. So we have those first two lots, the first one's now been sold to QuickTrip. They now own it as of December, right after you guys finished the roadway and everything got, all that got completed. Um, we, uh, were able to complete that sale, and then we have the second lot behind which we have future plans for as well. But right now, what we're currently trying to show is just a, it's roughly a little over two hundred units with a private clubhouse. Um, DJR, a well-known architect in town, has helped design these units. We think are kind of the right mix. We're, again, we're following market studies. We use Marquette Advisors. Um, they've advised us on almost all of our housing residential needs, and they've been on point on every step of the way. So we feel very confident in what we're doing here. We still have the, the lot A that you'll see up front. You'll see the groupings of the four, four unit, uh, houses that we call our bigger house right there. That's, that's still all intended to really be commercial, just so everyone knows. We, we're showing a more proof concept in terms of like, if, for some reason, it never came in the future, those four units on that commercial side could create a buffer. Before, they had this big roundabout, our, our engineers designed this big roundabout in the middle. There, and it was kind of a huge waste of area, and we couldn't really quite get our clubhouse to work right. We really wanted the clubhouse as the amenity, obviously, for all of the, all the local residents. And so we kind of took that out, kind of reframed. That's about a five acre parcel to give you guys a sense of size. When we do this site work for everything, this will take into all of our ponding and everything that we need done will all be done all at once. So it'll all happen. It's not like we have to come back and start all over again. So our plan is to come in and go, you know, uh, full tilt on the whole entire thing and get it done at, at once. Uh, our plan to build is kind of the first half of the section all the way up to Road A, there you'll see, go through the center. So we would put all that in, we'd do the first phase of a hundred, make sure, you know, everything's going right in the marketplace, as, you know, things have changed so rapidly. But we feel pretty confident we'll knock out the first hundred right away, and then we would just immediately keep following it right on through. So that's kind of the plan today, uh, that we have. We're, we're pretty excited to get started, you know, as soon as we can. And, uh, I'm here to answer any questions anyone has. Uh, in terms of architectural standards, I've listened, you guys have probably seen them all in the packets and stuff. They're pretty nice. Standards, we'll work that out within the developer's agreement, you know, in our workshop, I think, next Monday that we have planned. So I think some of those details and some of the questions you guys had, I think those are all the simple things that we can work out. Inside of with, with the city attorneys, city staff, and then also working with, uh, council to kind of address any concerns or questions you guys might have. Yeah, you can see some of the different, uh, architectural standards we have throughout, so it's a good mix throughout each building. And we've, we've kind of tried to go with kind of the farmhouse style look, uh, throughout. Rather than just this, you know, a lot of the way you see in a lot of other cities are just kind of the straight up, the old Lenar and DR Horton. You know, some of them are just box, and so we tried to take on a different approach here, so, uh, that, you know, avoid what some of the national builders are doing around, around the city, so. Here to answer the questions, if anyone has any.
Okay, um, let's, we'll entertain a motion first to start discussions. Motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat and planned unit, planned unit development. PUD for Elavage, second condition, for second addition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's make a second discussion.
I'll start it off, Corey. I've heard a lot on social media about s- uh, section eight housing. There's no low income housing in this at all, right?
None whatsoever. This is, this is market rate.
Okay.
These, these are not.
No, I didn't think so, but, you know, there's people on social media saying it's gonna be, you know, a lot of.
It's, it's just, that's just, they're just.
Okay.
Can, can you explain the difference between market rate and section eight?
Well, section eight is backed by, I mean, like, government-based, it might get in here and get the technicalities, but ours is just a straight, like, we, we're in the world of market rate. So we, we're of the market demands is where we're at. And we're gonna have a minimum here, guys, in order to even build these things. You don't just get to build these kind of properties without having, you know, financing and, and banking and stuff that we all have to meet. So our starting rents, as, as I communicated to staff and, and some council members that asked questions, was, you know, we're at, almost at fifteen hundred dollars a month, all the way up to three thousand right now. As you know, rates today, and I kind of know, so you can do the math really quick, uh, it's just where things are at right now. So, um, we don't have an affordability component. Uh, we're building an apartment right now in the sights, City Ramsey, or County Ramsey wants us to do. Add like three or four units. We're just, we just, it doesn't fit our model. It's not what we're doing. So I think, you know, as we discussed even on the way up here, just talking about, I mean, affordable housing should belong. Where affordable housing should be all together, so it makes sense. You can't just force something in on a project, you know, without trying to subsidize it. And again, there were not, there's no subsidy here, so.
And you're not asking for TIF, you're not asking for any other assistance from the city or government?
No, I think what, I think what people need to remember is that this development started and worked, we worked with city staff. We've been working on this for twenty nineteen, kind of the whole concept with MINDOT, the reduced conflict interchanges, uh, that affect our site. We, we gave the land to the city. We started off right out of the gate by saying, we want to encourage this whole development to take place. We swapped the land, they put the road and everything else. So we, we, I feel like we've been kind of more of a joint partnership in terms of getting this thing off the ground all the way back, you know, three years. So we've been, we've been working on it together for a long time with the, us, MINDOT. And all the other, as you know, as we drove down Sand Hill Parkway, which is a nice road now, we just want to kind of continue on with the development now, so, yeah.
So I want to comment on the market rate, um, thing because the government will pay market rate for a renter. So if a, so if a renter wanted to, uh, get assistance from the government, they, the government would pay a market rate. So how, how do you prevent? My, my feeling is people who rent are not the same as people who own. People who rent don't take as good a care as, of property as people who own.
I, I would not say that. I would not classify people who rent as good as people who own. I know plenty of people.
They weren't as good. I said they don't care for the property as well.
That is calling into their character.
I, I, I would, I'd just like to comment that, so, in, in all of our market rate properties, the, again, we have a professional management company in between that oversees, you know, our properties. I will tell you that you'd be shocked. People rent by choice today. It's not, it's not twenty, thirty years ago. Today, people want to be able to move. They want to be able to know that, hey, I want to take this job, I want to do, or I want to live out here. Now people, uh, you know, work at home. The people that are renting from us choose to invest elsewhere. They don't necessarily just put it at home. Everyone's different today. And, um, younger people don't want to take care of stuff. They don't want to be tied to a lawn and everything else. They want to come and go as they please. And so, I mean, our, and our property we're building right now, our starting rent starts at five thousand, goes to twelve thousand a month. So those people have probably multiple properties. Someone that might rent here might have a cabin up north. And they come close to the city, and this might be a place they hang out. This is their spot. And they're close enough in, they're near families. This might be someone that's selling their home and trying to get rid of the burden of taking care of their property because they no, no longer want to, or can, and, but still want to be in the community. So it's just completely different. There might be someone that's saying, hey, I want to live over here in the area, but I'm not ready to commit to buying a home in there yet, because that's a big commitment. And so there's just so much more flexibility with renting. And again, our, our market studies tell us this. So I just, I just don't, uh, I don't see it that way at all, so.
There's an old saying, where your treasure lies, there lies your heart also. And I think that's what Suzanne's getting at, and in my sixty-eight years of experience, it's pretty true. People have a commitment to where they put their money. And I've rented in the past, and I don't rent anymore, and there's a good reason for it. Uh, not rented personally. I mean, I rented property to people and they did not take good care of it. But that's, you know, that's just my personal experience. Maybe I was a lousy landlord. I don't know. But I think there is some concern about this going from, and I understand why you made the changes, I do. Uh, from, you know, partially single-family homes or townhomes for sale and then ninety people or whatever in an apartment building. I understand why you made the changes, given the changes in the market, and I, that's all valid. But what concerns me on this, to put a real fine point on it, is I read your traffic study. And the traffic study, as near as I could figure, was entirely focused on one hundred and eighty-seventh Avenue. And didn't take into account bleed over traffic to Viking Boulevard or down to Crosstown Boulevard through sixty-eight in that neighborhood that's just to the east of the site. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's really been inadequate traffic study. Because there's gonna be a lot more traffic coming out of that place, even if only half the people drive. That's still gonna be a hundred more cars every morning, every evening.
I'm happy to comment on that. So the traffic study was based upon the full development of grocery store being in there. Uh, medical office facility being in there, senior housing being in there, original housing development that was gonna be in there, QuickTrip going in there.
But I didn't see anything about anything but one hundred and eighty-seventh lane, which is a miniscule.
Because the city at the time, when we did the traffic study, did not make the determination to continue Sand Hill Parkway to Viking Boulevard. That was the city's decision. That's not my land. So we're only focused on my development.
Think as part of this process, we should enhance the traffic study to include that, just for the sake of the people who live there?
Um, I think that what I'm proposing today, and that's why we did a master PUD, at the phase that I have to come back and tell the city what my next step is each way, which was what we agreed to in the original master development. I think we're doing exactly what we're supposed to be doing. I don't think that, I don't think that my traffic study is irrelevant whatsoever. I think it's very relevant. I think what it tells you, if you read it, it says, it's, it says that this does not have anything, and they, they don't do tra- you know, they don't do, the MINDOT will come determine any impact on Highway sixty-five. They would get involved. My development is not gonna have any impact in terms of, uh, that, that, that they're not planned to handle so far right now. So I don't, I don't understand.
I don't understand.
So our, our study, or our, our development is not going to, uh, cause any, like, what I would say, like, uh, red flags or like, uh, like increase, like we need to put in a, a light on Highway sixty-five. My housing is not gonna cause that.
Well, I mean, in the study itself, it said, even though it was very narrowly focused on one hundred and eighty-seventh Avenue, it said that when it reached this point, mitigation would be required. Well, by mitigation, they mounted a traffic light at one hundred and eighty-seventh lane.
They said that MINDOT will determine whether or not they would require.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and that's assuming all of the development has taken place.
I understand something. I'm basically pro-development, okay? I like to see development. I, I want, you know, and, and it does conform to the zoning, it does conform to the almighty comprehensive plan and all that. But my specific concern is, on the very same page on a Facebook East Bethel site where someone was advocating for your project, all, all the comments around it was, what a hell of a time people are having getting to and from work in the morning through Viking and sixty-five, Crosstown and sixty-five, that area right there. And so it just seemed that to add another two hundred apartments, which could be, what, four hundred to eight hundred people, whatever, but say only one person per property drives. It's still a hundred more people every morning and evening during basically one hour peak, morning and evening. And they have to go somewhere, and they're gonna figure out real quick that one hundred and eighty-seventh and a J-turn is not the way to get out of there if they can avoid it. Because it's gonna be really slow.
Corey, when you did, when you did your traffic study, was that prior to the city deciding to extend the Parkway up to Viking? Is that why you included? There was no road in the plan.
You guys got the funding differently, and you guys, as a city, not with my, me and my involvement. You guys made the decision to go all the way to Viking. Our plan at the time, we were told specifically by the city, that we were only going to the end of our property line for this phase, and that was it.
Yeah, yeah, no, and that's fine. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood it, so. Kind of, I, unscientifically, the fact that there's now a secondary or a second access into this area via Viking says that, that that's only gonna relax some of the pressure on one eighty-seventh.
Well, they all wind up on the same road, sixty-five.
Not necessarily.
Whether you go north on Sand Hill and onto Viking, which would be.
Is your concern of, of the impact on Highway sixty-five?
I'm concerned about the people commuting north and south on sixty-five and the people who live adjacent. Because people are gonna be driving through their neighborhoods to get to Crosstown and or Viking. Well, not so much Viking, but Crosstown. They're gonna have to go to sixty-eight, south to Crosstown.
Well, is your concern access or concern traffic volume on Highway sixty-five?
Volume, and, well, traffic volume for everyone involved, okay? And not just the people who are gonna be showing up in the new development, but people who are already there. What's the impact gonna be on them? And if we don't at least look at this, they're gonna be very unhappy with us, and rightfully so.
I'll give you, I'll give you an example of something we just finished right now. So on Rice Street, on the brand new bridge of Rice Street and six ninety-four, they just built a new, you know, the two new roundabouts and the nice development right there. We're building a one hundred and seventy-six unit apartment building on the corner, two acres. Two hundred and seventy-six parking stalls underneath, underground, underneath the apartment. Twenty stalls up top, that's it, surface. And our traffic engineers all came back with the county. Everyone just did the exercise because Rice Street just got redone. And they basically said, this is like, no, this is not even like, this is, doesn't affect anything whatsoever. And so we can do the exercise of doing the traffic engineer. I certainly, I'm not opposed to it. What will happen is, is the study that we did was for the full development to be completed. So at that time, so understand that, that, what we gave you was a traffic study of, of our original design. We're not fully there even yet, or only in the, like, what I would call the second phase, as, as we, as we're calling it today.
Right, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be overnight. They all show up and there they are, yeah. I get that.
What I, what I'm, what I'm offering is, is that when we come towards the commercial phase of it, to do an updated traffic study at that time, makes perfect sense. I have no problem doing that as a developer and saying, let's look at it and see what the impacts would be. You know, because, because what's gonna happen is the, the commercial entity that would be coming would also partake and want to know exactly what's taking place at that time. And there would, there'd be updates to what the current market is versus, you know, when we did our first one, which was like twenty nineteen, into twenty twenty, I believe, we're doing that phase. So, I mean, I have no problem doing that. I don't see, you know, the road that was just built for six million, seven million as not being able to handle our development whatsoever right now in our study.
I'm not talking about Sand Hill Parkway. I'm talking about sixty-five and Viking and Crosstown. Those are the primary arteries around there. All those people have to travel south in the morning, north in the evening, east, west. And they are, they're, they're known to be, Viking in particular, just real difficult places to move in the morning and, in the morning primarily.
My office on one hundred ninth, I, I know.
Yeah, well, that sucks too. Put it plainly.
I actually tend to agree with Kevin on this. Um, and not just the driving. Uh, Friday, I was driving north on sixty-five, and there was somebody trying to cross with a bike, and I'm thinking, if this development comes in, there's gonna be teens and, uh, people trying to walk across sixty-five to get to the theater and stuff. What are the plans for something like that? That's, that's like a quarter of death of accidents, that whole area. Every week or so, there's a accident in that whole corridor on sixty-five. I think there needs to be another traffic study.
Well, if you're talking about sixty-five, which the city does not control, that's, that's the state. If you have issues with the state and what their prognosis is for sixty-five, then the state would be the people to talk to about putting a moratorium on development north of Blaine on sixty-five until they make it bigger. The, the sixty-five's issues is not necessarily this development.
Good, can we take a step back? Craig's not here, our city engineer's here, but, but Jack, can you explain what the purpose and the outcome of a traffic study for something like this would be?
The traffic study that Corey's referring to, which was done by Kim Lee Horn.
The traffic study that Corey's referring to, which was done by Kim Lee Horn in twenty nineteen, took into account only this access road to this point right here.
Right, but what I'm asking for, what's the purpose of doing a traffic study?
The purpose of doing the traffic study is determine the impact it has on the intersections and how traffic would flow to get in and out of here. And if this would be a significant generator of traffic at this time to significantly impact traffic flow on Highway sixty-five.
And then, would that study then, if they identified issues, would it also include recommendations on how to address and alleviate the issue?
It would.
So whether it be turn lanes, or additional lanes, or?
A traffic light, and they referred to it as mitigation.
That, that's what the report would come out.
That's correct, and there were some mentions of that, but no recommendations, just anything specific. Now, one thing, I did have a follow-up conversation with MINDOT regarding the study. And I was told that, you know, the traffic study was good, and they were looking at it and considering it, but they did not base their warrants. What was essentially recommended was a traffic light may be required at one hundred and eighty-seventh. This was the traffic engineers that said this, not MINDOT. But they said they don't base it on projections for situations like this. They wait until the development comes in and then do the actual counts to make the determination if the standards are met for a traffic light. The other thing is that MINDOT does not want to put a traffic light at one hundred and eighty-seventh, because then we would have three traffic lights in five-eighths of a mile. We'd have one at one hundred and eighty-seventh, we would have one here at the south J-turn, and we'd have one at Highway sixty-five and Viking Boulevard. That's almost like city blocks in the big city. So, they said, you know, some of the future proposals, if this does become an issue, and when there's other development in this area. Would be to look at some turn lane issues, and the other thing that they were emphasizing too, is the completion of this service road down to Ham Lake, and then from the Ham Lake down to Crosstown. So you would have essentially a major service road paralleling Highway sixty-five with controlled signalized intersections on each end.
So Jack's description of what a traffic study is for is exactly what I thought a traffic study is for. And that's the way I read your traffic study, and the data that was used in it was also from twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen. Which is, you know, somewhat dated, but that's out of your control, I mean, to a certain degree. You know, we didn't predict COVID. But I, I think the concerns I'm expressing are valid. And I've, I've tried to do due diligence. When I was running to be on here, I emphasized the need for due diligence, uh, like you do in business, you know, that's my background. And you're held accountable if you don't do it, as you well know. And so I've tried to inform myself, and I've talked to a bunch of people about it. And that is their concern, the, who's gonna be there, who's gonna be, you know? A lot of people have a lot of ideas about who the residents are gonna be, you know, who knows? But, and from just a practical numbers, black and white standpoint, what people are concerned about, I wanna be able to go somewhere in the morning and come home in the evening. It's really right down to that.
Can I ask the city, did you guys do a traffic study when you guys extended the road to Viking?
I don't know.
No, there, there was no traffic study done on that Sand Hill Parkway portion. The only thing that was done, it was designed to accommodate traffic that would handle the development of this project. The eventual build-out of the golf course and the property south of there. And that's just geometric standards. Now, we did, we did, we did have to enter into an agreement with the county that at this intersection right here in twenty twenty-five, there will be some improvements in addition of turn lanes and bypass lanes. That was part of the agreement, and that will be done in twenty twenty-five.
Is it fair to say, Jack, that, that when the city went through the whole process of designing this road? And working with the county, working with the state, that part of the intention of this road was safety improvements, but also the fact that, to prepare for development in that area? So the roads were, must have been sized for that area?
That, that, that's correct. The road, the geometric design of the roads, the width, the speed limits were designed for the build-out of this whole area. Little northeast and south of here. Now, as part of this too, this has been, this road has been part of our comp plan since
Right.
twenty-ten. And the road will eventually go south and connect to Briarwood and one hundred and eighty-first. Uh, I know that Ham Lake has also had some interest, or there has been some discussion about extending that from one hundred and eighty-first down to Crosstown. Uh, where they are in that process, I'm not sure, but, uh, I think that's one of the things that MINDOT would like to explore. Is an alternative to resolve any traffic issues that might result from this development. This development itself would not precipitate that. But if the golf course, whenever it's sold and developed, then that would be one that would contribute twice as many homes as this development would. And the property south of this can contribute at least as many. So I think what MINDOT's position was, from the conversations I had with them, is this a wait-and-see thing? Let's see what the impact is with the actual counts. And then now that the fact that there's two outlets here may relieve some of this pressure on one hundred and eighty-seventh. And then we'll make a decision on what to do there.
Well, I, um, I'm going to make a motion to table this, because I think a traffic study needs to be done to include pedestrian traffic that's gonna cross over to go to the theater. So I'm making that motion now. I don't know if I can get a second.
Is the motion on, on, on the floor of the table? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made, and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Aye.
Aye.
That motion fails. So we continue discussion. It seems like, Kevin, your concern was the effect of traffic on the existing traffic flow, Highway sixty-five and Viking and Crosstown.
Specifically on the people who live in that area or who commute through it. But particularly people who live in East Bethel now, and their ability to get moving in the morning and evening.
So, I mean, the way I'm looking at this is, you know, they're feeding off county roads and the state roads. And both the county and state have been aware of growth plans for our city and every other city, that's how they do their planning. I, I don't think they look on a microscale for every little development, but they look at, you know, like, for example, in East Bethel, we've got a corridor that's gonna some time, point in time's gonna have a lot of residents. And they have all those numbers, so they do their planning on traffic that way. So, when you say you're concerned about the residents, you're concerned about additional traffic they have to deal with, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the solutions we've had so far, these, uh, high-conflict intersections with J-turns. I have not met a single person who thinks the J-turn is a good idea. And as a motorcyclist, I can tell you it's a nightmare.
But, but you know, traffic flow on sixty-five was improved by like thirty percent.
Oh, I don't, it's hard to imagine. It's hard to imagine that.
It's what?
But I believe you, if you say so, but it's hard for me to imagine.
I mean, that, 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 I mean, it's making traffic.
Cause all I hear is complaints from people. All I hear, complaints.
I, I, I don't, I don't think of, of another traffic studies, I mean, when we've done traffic studies in the back in the past, it's been for, you know, more difficult areas for development. This development has a road that was built for the development, so I mean, if, 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 if we didn't build a road to handle it, then we shouldn't be pulling roads, I guess, but, I mean, I, I think that's pretty obvious.
I don't understand. I mean, the roads in the development, what does that do with?
No, Sand Hill's what I'm talking about.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm talking about. How does that facilitate the people who have to get out of the area and back to home?
I guess what I'm saying is, the, the road was built with all this in mind, for a lot more development in mind, not, not just this development. That's why the road is built the way it was.
Well, right. I think it'll just be fine if all these people work from home. That'll, that'll just be fine. Otherwise, I don't see how what I'm saying is irrelevant.
And, and I think when I drove by to say, rhyme myself, there is turn lanes off of Sand Hill in, into this development that's existing?
Off sixty-five and?
No, off Sand Hill.
Yes.
Yes.
Right turn lanes into your development proposal.
Yeah, as we discussed in our, in our prior meetings on the commercial aspect, we, you know, look at, you know, again, waiting for who that tenant might be. We would determine the proper access, whether we have to widen the turn lanes and do the, the work that they, they would require us to do as well. So as, as developers, so.
Okay. Those are comments?
Well, I just wanna say, I don't think, um, these rental townhomes are, fit the character of East Bethel. And, um, I think it's going to be the increase on our services. We don't really have the infrastructure in place. And I think that should come before the, um, housing. Um, I think a lot of the residents are, that live in that one-to-mile radius are not happy with it. And I guess I had one person ask me the question. Is the developer planning on owning this for a long term? Or is the plan to get it developed and then sell it off to another owner?
We're a developer and holder, we always have it.
So what is, what is your model? Is this all, these are all rentals?
Yeah. We tend to build them and hold them, so that's, that's kind of our plan, that's what we do.
I'm, I'm sorry, Corey, can you?
We, we, we build them and hold them. That's what we do. So, obviously, if the market comes along, if something changes inside of my personal life, that's, you know, obviously, you know, our option. If I go away, my wife decides, she doesn't want anywhere, I guess I could talk to her about that, but I mean, you know, we're, we're, uh, go look at the projects we've done, everything we've built, we hold. I'm very involved in my communities everywhere I'm at. I'm in, I'm in Shoreview across the street, and I'm literally building another one right across the street, next door with the city of Adniss. And so.
Has there been any estimate of the impact on the need for, no, the county sheriff's department and/or fire department as part of the addition? Cause there, one thing in development is there's usually typically, and I think you'd confirm this, a lot of externalized costs. You know, you don't wanna include them all, you'd never get anything built, but, uh,
We help with.
The consequence of the development genera, it generates a need for services like sheriff and fire, emergency services, okay? Has there been any estimate by anybody with the city of the impact of this on that? Cause it's gonna be, what do you estimate, five hundred people, six hundred people, something like that?
Uh, no, not realistically in the size of these units and what they are.
Two people?
Two, two and a half, maybe at most.
Four hundred and thirty, four hundred and fifty people?
Fully developed out, yeah.
Well, that's, that's a fair slice of people.
And substantial tax base too.
Well, yeah, well, that's, I didn't, I didn't say what it cost us money.
There's seventy-seven hookups in water right now, currently, Jack?
Correct.
We're gonna provide two hundred and twelve. I think we did the math with you guys, it was like one point eight million we're gonna spend on water hookups. We're gonna spend a lot of investment in the community.
Right, yeah, but I just wondered, as part of, again, due diligence thing, has anybody estimated what the need for additional sheriff's resources and/or EMS fire?
Do we, we don't routinely do that, do we?
No, we, we don't. We do submit these plans to the fire department for their review and comment, but it's generally on accessibility. They have no issues with accessibility for this development. But to try to project what the demand for fire services are is, you know, it's a shot in the dark. As far as the sheriff's department goes, uh, probably in this type of neighborhood, requests would be minimal. But, uh, there's no real way to project that. We can, we can give estimates, but they're just gonna be estimates.
Well, that's all you're ever doing, is giving estimates, but it's based on if we have X number of people and, and experience becomes similar to the rest of the people, then, then you can develop an estimate. It's always an estimate, it's always a pro forma, as they call it.
And, and, and I think in this situation, as far as the sheriff's services go, they give us every year a report on what we request for hourly service, and they determine if that's adequate. So I think we would probably be waiting for them to tell us if there was extra demand from here. I think, uh, probably if this were like the original development was, if there was an apartment building there that may require extra sheriff's department patrol, because you've got more people in one building, and the same as fire, there's probably maybe more chance for fire, because people are eighty-nine units in one building. But, uh, I think this is something that's gonna have to be determined after the fact, and, uh, we'll get a report from the sheriff's department next year, they analyze what our condition is and recommend that if our hours of service are adequate for their patrol needs.
Understand, I'm relatively new, like, real new to the city council, so there's a lot of things that I have yet to learn. But I'm trying to ask questions that, again, get back to due diligence. And it's not only are we looking out for the people's money, are we looking out for their quality of life? Cause they moved here, or maybe they, like, Brian and his family's been here since the dawn of time, a long time. But, uh, it's, that's part of the equation too, is are we gonna preserve the quality of life? And for a lot of people, that involves getting away from, back home, you know, commuting. And so I'm just trying to answer, ask all the questions. I'm not hostile to you. I don't have a big position, I'm trying to defend none of that stuff. Okay, I'm just trying to do due diligence, that's all.
No, I understand, Councilmember Lewis, we, we've been working on this for quite a few years now, so this isn't all new to me either.
I know, believe me, I've been through a whole lot of information.
And, and so, yeah, and so, so for us, we, we do believe, you know, that what our plan is, it, it, you know, it's appropriate within the neighborhood and, and the comp plan, and we try to, we've been working hand-in-hand with the city on this for years.
Well, I'm also talking to the people at the city of, if we haven't been looking at things this way, maybe that's how we should be looking at that. Is, is the consequences on things like fire, sheriff, and stuff like that, just, just as a line item, just as line items.
One nice note that the fire chief will let you know is that all these buildings will be sprinkled, which will be a nice feature.
From a fireman's point of view, I'm not a fireman, from, from a fireperson's, person's point of view. Isn't a row house basically all one building?
Uh, with party, with, you know, divide and walls, these, these units are actually designed right now, today. As they're all, could be for sale in the future if we ever wanted, they, they get designed with separate, you know, meters on.
It's all stick filled, right? It's not, no poured concrete walls in between them.
Yeah, there's, there's a handful of different ways of building these, and, uh, one of them involves having a air gap between each unit with fire retardant lumber built all around that. So one side could burn, and the other side may not be affected at all, especially with having.
Different fire rating, yes.
Especially with having sprinkles.
Is that how yours are designed?
Yeah.
Corey, they're.
Code-wise, we, we don't have choice, so that kinda forces you into it, so, yeah.
None of these buildings are taller than two stories, correct?
No.
So when, when the apartments came in, I know the fire department looked at it closely, and we have an agreement with Ham Lake Fire Department. Because they have the taller trucks to get the, to the apartment, so that's how we dealt it here. So from a fire impact, from a services, equipment standpoint, we're, we're gonna be okay. We got, we got equipment for this, so.
And that would be essentially the benchmark we would utilize to evaluate the impact on fire services. Is do we have the type of equipment to service this? Now, let's say there was a four-story apartment building that's come in. You know, that might necessitate our decision to consider the purchase of a ladder truck to address that situation.
And we worked with the fire chief, you know, we went through the whole entire development, we looked at all the different, you know, impacts it would have, what they would need, or what they wanted us to change. We took all their comments, we put them into play right away. So, I mean, we've been working with city staff, you know, on this too as well. So everyone's had an opportunity to try to give us their feedback and let us know any concerns they have, and we've been trying to address them along the way, so.
Yeah, any more on that? Um, I got question. I got a question about, uh, basically, well, parks and trails, but mostly trails on this. Do we have a, a, a map that depicts the proposed trails, Jack?
Yes. The areas in green show the proposed trails. And then there's three points where there will be trail connections required to hook up to adjoining properties. This one, as you see where the cursor is, is the one going to the north. Uh, these two over on the east side are two trail connections. There will be ones going to the south that will hook up with two different property owners, so. Whenever these properties are developed, they'll have to develop their trail system to tie in to where these connection points are illustrated here at the property boundaries.
And are these all constructed at when?
We would be doing those at the time of our development, so.
What's that?
We would put those in when we're doing our development. Yeah, with the horizontal phase when we get everything kinda. Fine, we would be doing all that work.
And so, so you have a community center. Is there green space there too?
Yeah, front and back.
And par- is that parking?
We, we put parking in front and also in the back, just we looked at a lot of different models throughout the city and. Rather than have just one big parking lot, it just got a smaller one, cause if you're at the pool and then maybe someone's having an event up front. Cause the, it's got, got private space for the residents.
So, that, that's where I was kinda getting at, so it's a gathering place.
On each side, yeah.
Alright, okay.
So it's, it kinda helps separate who's there for what reason.
And then, maybe you can expand that, that figure out, Jack. I wanna see the south part of that drawing. So, it's hard to show on this one, but, oh, the other way, right there. That's all white space right there.
Yeah, right now we have ins, you know, consequential wetlands and we don't, we haven't really have, we don't have a plan yet for that. Because we kinda wanna see what happens in the future there. If we do something there, we'll have to, we'll probably have wetland impact that we'll have to consider. And, uh, do some more.
What do you mean by do something there?
We would have to probably buy wetland credits. We'd have to figure out something there. There's some in there inside of these, you'll see these two, couple of different areas. Some of those we can't touch. Unless we go through a process. Some we can. And so, right now, we're just letting them be as a kinda more of a buffer between there and whatever the future neighborhood is. And again. As you guys know, in other private meetings we've had, you know, we've talked with the, you know, the person that's had the purchase agreement with the land, you know, the golf course land and stuff. Just trying to understand what's happening in the area. So, right now, currently, we have nothing planned in that area.
So, but that might be developed in the future? Is that what you're saying?
It could, it could be. It's not really inside of our pro forma today as we're, we're not tackling that today. It's inside my PUD. But we don't have any plan for it today. We just stopped our, like I said, we did the first original. Uh, plan with QuickTrip and then the outlot that we have a plan for potentially daycare facility or some sort to kinda support the neighborhood.
Well, I guess if my, I guess my, I'm a little confused. Shouldn't that be an outlot if it's gonna be developed in the future? Cause right now, it's, it's, to me, I look at it, this is developed. As part of your plat as undeveloped land. That's green space. Now, Chris, Jack, am I looking at that wrong?
No.
Can they come back?
Inside of our PUD, we'd come back and we'd have to submit another.
I don't know which one yet.
Yeah, I mean, we, we'd just be coming back and submitting a plan, uh, inside the PUD, so.
Page seventy-three of the packet states outlet A. Outlot A, on the very south of that, next to Future Street A. Uh, the. Area between that is called amenity area. That's page seventy-three of the packet.
And that's, um, that's consistent with page eighty-one too, which is in the, uh, master development agreement. Shows that as a, as outlot A. I, I don't know if the, do we have a map reflecting the preliminary plat that's up? I know we're looking at the green space map, but.
Go down a couple, Jack. You, one of your colored.
Yeah. Top right, we just don't have.
We have an outlot A here now. And when I was saying the master, this was labeled as outlot A. As, as well. So, I, I think it was labeled an outlot.
We pa- page down a couple. One you had green highlighted.
Yeah.
See, now that's showing it as green space. So, I'm gonna argue and.
So I don't, I don't know who highlighted the green.
You wouldn't be able to come back and redo it, cause it's showing as green space. You'd have to replat. Cause it's not an outlaw. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to identify if this is a future conflict.
Can you slide this light over here to the right? Just slide it this way. No, the other way, Sergeant. There you go. I wanna see what's. I don't know who labeled all this green though. Like, I don't know if someone at staff highlighted it as green.
Probably, it's probably Stephanie, but.
Yeah, so that, just so you know, like, that's, that, that, you know, we, we didn't submit it.
Yeah, in.
All green like that.
In, uh, pre- uh, previous presentations of this by Stephanie. Uh, the reason for this map particularly was to demonstrate how much green space there is.
Right.
In the development.
That southern chunk is the biggest chunk of the green space, so it's not depicted white right then, so.
So, at the time, you know, when we did the original PUD, if you remember. You guys didn't have a full design yet of where that road, the roundabout where it was gonna go. Where it's gonna start going, whether it would start turning or go right, so we kinda left this area. Cause we didn't know exactly what was gonna happen. We did know where the roundabout was gonna be or where this road was going this way. We didn't know. All the future, so we just haven't touched that area, so.
Well, I'm just gonna ask the question if it, you know, to Chris and Jack, is, should that be an outlaw if there's a potential for future development? I, I don't know how you go back without replating. It's platted.
Uh, excuse, sorry. Mike Mergens, I'm general counsel for, uh, Elavag Development Group. A- a- as it is depicted on this, I would say it's excess land. Uh, and so, you are correct, it could not be developed separately without a plat that created a separate lot, but. That, that's how this all started, right? It was all, all land and we had to come in with the plat, with the plat to, to create the lot, so. If at some point in time in the future that wanted to be developed, we would have to come back in front of all of you. With a new plat creating that, um, as a lot and you have a right to vote on. Whether it, the proposed use was, uh, acceptable or not acceptable. And then until that happened, it could not be developed, um, separate apart from the PUD.
Yeah, and if, if I'm correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but in the master PUD agreement that's attached to the. The mass, the map anyway, I think it's exhibit B, it's not ever depicted as developed.
I would agree, that is correct.
Developing it is. While the land's included in the overall map, I don't think the intention has ever been, or at least it hasn't been shown to the city as developing. That particular parcel. I think that's always been, um. Set up as undeveloped land. As, as part of this overall agreement, so I would agree that to come back, uh, we'd need a, a replat. For that particular.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna bring it up, I mean, it's.
Yeah, and like I said, at the time when we did it, you know, the original master agreement. Some of these things weren't worked out yet with the, where that road was going, how it was going up and around and stuff, so. Those designs were being done on, on the fly by Mindot and Craig.
And, and also too, until this property owner decides what he wants to do with his property and how he wants it developed. There will eventually have to be a city street that comes. Down somewhere in this neighborhood, which that would necessitate the planning of that.
Do, do you happen, I think it's in the packet, uh, for the. For the council members, I, I think Councilmember Mundell mentioned it, seventy-three?
Master development.
Yeah, and you can also see it on page eighty-one. You might be able to see it better on page eighty-one. You see the changes from what was originally going to be phase two to the, the current phase two based on. The changes in market conditions and the proposal from, from Elavag. But on those pages, um. This section, uh, was, was vacant there as well.
Yep. Had to trail through it, so.
And I think it still does.
Yeah, what we did is we just, this trail is gonna get tweaked. I told Stephanie in our. Discussion, that trail will get tweaked a little bit to go up and around that lot a little bit, so it's a little more windy through there, so.
Well, that kinda segues into my next question.
Sure.
I'm looking for the right drawing. Looks like. Attachment eight in our packet. It's got more of the detail. So. Am I correct in there's no future connections from this development to the prop- road connections? From this development to the property to the east?
That's correct, and that's why this is probably the most. Realistic way to connect to the property to the east.
Okay, so, it begs the question. Your, your home's on the far south, which is on the right side. You've got a big gap there. And it looks like that's where a potential road goes through. That's what it looks like, at least.
That's not, I mean, it's never been my intention.
So, we're, we're, city hasn't been talking about running a road through there. And connecting with developments to the east or south or.
No, this, th- this, is this the location you're speaking of, Steve? No, we've never.
Not our intention.
Um, do you have the landscaping plan, Jack?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there something landscaped in there?
Well, I'm not careful, you know, someone could think it, but it doesn't need to block it. I was just curious whether that was an anticipated future road.
Between the houses there. Yeah.
I'm not suggesting fill it with a house either, so.
No, but if you, if you kinda take a look at the wetlands, you can see them depicted there. It, there's, there's a lot that'd have to be done.
Sure.
Make it even, yeah.
Yeah, I don't doubt that at all. I just wanna know if it's. So, back on this attachment eight. It's shown. On the drawing, if you go to it, that there's easements or something going to the east. It's, I'm not sure what your title your drawing is.
Are you talking about these?
No, you're talking about these two right here.
No, no, you gotta go to the, it's on the plat. It's an engineered drawing. It's attachment eight.
Let's go to the plat.
Yep, that shows it. So, on a.
Yeah, that's the water.
That's what?
That's our water loop. Nate, Nate's, you've been commenting on that, that's our. The easement, I believe we went through that in our meeting. It's all of our water connection.
Going, going to the east to the.
Yeah, so they, I don't know if you can count on me, we discussed that it was about.
They want the water, Billy, Craig too.
Oh, you gotta loop through.
Yeah, they want the loop going through, so.
So it's a utility easement?
Rest of the utility is meant to loop future water and they even had some discussion about sewer lines through there, but I don't think, I think it was too shallow through there, but.
We had some issues with the water for sure.
Okay. So do we have drawings that show that's utility easement?
That's what this.
Cause that doesn't say it. It's just lines on a drawing.
So I, I think, um, steps from here, right, so this is a preliminary plat. Uh, we'd come back on the final plat, all of the easements would be, uh, located on the final plat and then they'd have to, that would be approved.
Oh, sure. I'm, I'm just asking, cause usually on a preliminary plat, nothing's on there to start with.
It does say drainage and utility easement, if you zoom in on it.
I don't, where are we talking?
On that figure?
Maybe not.
About this line right here, correct?
On attachment A in the packet.
No, 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 no. To the, right where this cursor is right now. That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah. On, on, on attachment eight. It states drainage and utility easement.
I've got a different attachment then, cause mine does not say those words. I have no text on it.
Page, page one oh eight?
One oh seven.
Okay, go to one oh eight.
How many preliminary plat drawings do we have?
Yeah.
No, I'm serious, that's a, that's a problem. There's only one preliminary plat drawing.
Yeah, one oh seven, the page one oh seven does not have it.
One zero is in more.
But this is not. That's not in our preliminary plat drawing, that's just. It doesn't have the whole drawing. Anyhow. Okay, to answer the question. The commercial area.
Yeah.
Is shrunk considerably.
Uh, no, actually, it's about the same size, still five acres, still have the same two footprints that we originally proposed, what we're showing here.
With lot one, block eight?
Yeah, so the reason why I asked for that only was that if something doesn't come, we're not building that right now. And I'd said we'd put that in agreement. Uh, it's just there to show like what could go as a potential buffer, depending on what the use is. We don't know what the tenant is gonna be. I know the city wants a grocer. I know we are looking at, medical services are needed, you know, doctors, things like that. If someone comes in, we gotta have a blank slate for them. So that five acre blank slate is right there. We gotta determine how, what, how best to use that slate. Right now, we're not, we're not proposing today, um, to build those. And I've said that to, to the city staff and that would be in our, that'd be in our developers' agreement as well. It's just there to show like, you know, look, if, if something doesn't come ever in the future. It may make sense to put a, a, a different type of a buffer in between, depending on the type of use. But at the end of the day, our goal is still the five acres of commercial for sure would be our goal.
I have a concern, cause this is smaller acreage than it was on previous drawings for the commercial.
Uh, no, we've had five acres roughly the whole time. So this, if you look at our original concept plan, it's. It's pretty darn close. The, the, we're matching to your roads and you built for us right here. This is the exact same. These two entry points that you guys built up there, they're out there right now in Saddle Parkway. Match up exactly what it is.
So, outlot A has the same dimensions as it did in your previous drawings?
Uh, it's pretty darn close, yeah.
Cause I over, I overlapped it in your road Bs in the exact same place as your previous roads. I don't know how it got, didn't get smaller, so.
I, I have the same square footage after all the, you know, like I said, we're developing this whole site right now today. So all the water. And now the runoff, everything's all calculated with this, so. I, I. We still have the ability to, to build a twenty-five thousand square foot building, a fifteen thousand square foot building footprint, so.
Well, I understand. I'm, I'm talking about the, the area that was set aside for commercial. It's shrunk, so. You know, and, and. From a community standpoint. I mean, we understand the housing, that was part of all comp plans, given the housing choices. But for a long sixty-five, it's, it's the drive for commercial. And I think that needs still be a focus of that, that front property.
Very much is for us.
What's that?
It, it very much is a focus for us.
It, it isn't if you got residential places in a spot where it should be commercial though.
So, maybe we're not understanding each other. Like, right now, what we're showing there was our concept plan through the city and it's on the plat. But our plan here in this whole entire area between here and our master developer, this whole entire area there will be considered to be commercial. What I was showing, shit, city and staff and people was that, this would be if, like, what if something doesn't able to come? What we did is we showed it, it's not part of what our. So in our agreement, it'll state in there that we intended for commercial purposes. So we'd have to come back in to you, the city, and to get that part approved.
It does state then the developers' agreement?
Well, I understand it's in the developers' agreement. My point is though, this drawing has shrunk the amount of commercial that was originally proposed. And.
Can we go to the original drawing?
And, and.
I just wanna.
We haven't talked about the fact that, you know, we have guidelines.
Yeah.
On, on, on our mixed use developments that show twenty percent commercial. And we're not even here.
Well, QuickTrip is already counts as one, does it not? The lot that's behind it counts as one, plus my, the five acre.
Is it twenty percent of the acreage, the total acreage? I, I know, and, and that's a guideline, I understand, but we're shrinking away from the guideline, so.
Also, I, again, I, so for my original concept of, we had roughly five acres for the commercial piece right there up front. So I just haven't changed it, so I'm, I'm struggling with, I'm not following what you're saying.
Steve, I did check with Stephanie on that to verify that twenty percent, and she says that twenty percent is for the whole mixed use district. Not necessarily for a. not necessarily for a specific project.
No, I understand. It's, I understand includes the Quick Trip. My biggest point is, this is our first one, we're not even gonna follow the guideline, so, which is, that's our choice. But I also like the idea of, I mean, I understand, you know, the housing number's doubling because they're going to townhomes. But at the same time, we're shrinking the amount of area available for future commercial.
Well, the only area up front to build commercial, this is all wetland. This is all wetland.
No, I'm talking, in, in that corner where you have Outlet A.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm looking at the drawing, it was depicted before, that whole area is commercial. And now it's not.
So again, um, picture Outlet A right now is all because our agreement will state that that's what we're doing. Outlet A will also include Lot One Block Eight. That's all considered like a commercial lot in our mind.
Right, Outlet Eight, yeah. My point is it should also include Lot One Block Eight.
That's, yeah, that's what I've been saying all along.
So I'll be clear, take that off the drawing.
Yeah, sure, not, not a problem. And again, in our agreement, the final plat, when we come through, yes.
No, I mean, before it gets approved, that needs to be off the drawing.
That's fine.
Okay. So that'd be all commercial. Okay. Uh, then my last question is, I know there's discussion, was parking. There's, I didn't quite understand, there's, some roads are gonna be marked for no parking on one side, is that, is that how it was?
We had like a snow emergency that we kind of, that we kind of planned that we would, you know, we could initiate inside of our development, we could do.
Well, let's, okay, I'm gonna get to that, but so there's gonna be streets that are parked, marked as no parking, we still have no parking in the winter. How does that change? So from November to April, there's no parking at night in our city streets?
Yep.
So the agreement we discussed with them is they need to have on-street parking on there. And they are gonna need it on one side, including in the wintertime. But it would not be in effect during snow, snowfalls, they'd have to remove the cars from the, from the road. But they could park overnight in the wintertime on one side of the road. That was the determination of the width of the street that was taken into effect for that as well.
So do we have to change our ordinance?
Well, it's just, this is a specific with the PUD. To this PUD.
What's that?
It's just specific to our PUD.
Right, I guess, I'll ask our attorney, do we have to change our ordinance to make an exception to an ordinance that says you can't park at night?
As far as the parking ordinance or the mixed-use ordinance?
Parking ordinance. Right now it states we can't from, what time is it, eleven to six, whatever.
Yeah, from November through March.
Yeah, for winter parking.
Then yes.
So we'd have to revise our ordinance?
Correct.
The, the agreement couldn't do it alone.
No, but by entering, entering into the agreement, I think we would be committing to some type of.
Sure, no, I understand that. I just want to know if we need to change our ordinance as well.
Or we could, uh, uh, have the ordinance apply to different districts.
Yeah, so, so we just got the treat.
The council being our master developer, like define what the district is, what we're calling this district.
Yeah, we could, uh, we could, we could define where that parking ordinance would be effective, and that would exempt this area. And then the developers' agreement would control how parking would operate here.
Okay. So which parts of the development will there be on-street parking?
All through the main roads, right through there, and then, then we have small alleyways that are all managed privately by.
So, so is this intended to be parking or guest parking?
Guest parking could be on one side of the road, yes.
Okay, so every unit has a sufficient number of parking spots?
And then there's also, they also have, you know, their own driveways.
Right, dr- between driveways and garages, okay.
So people wouldn't necessarily be parking on the road, it would just be considered a overflow?
If someone was a visitor, obviously, yes, or if someone was hosting a gathering, I suppose.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I guess the only, so is it two hundred and twelve? Keep saying about.
Well, it's.
I'm an engineer, I don't know how you do about, you know, so.
Whether or not you're taking account, you know, the other ones at our bottom, we just counted that number on there.
Oh, okay.
Two hundred and sixteen. Those will be removed.
Okay, and then a staff question. Uh, at some point, we're gonna have two hundred and twelve new utility bills. And, and so we build each one separately?
Yeah, these would have their own separate meters, so in the event that they decided to sell in the future, they'd all have their own individual connections already in place.
Okay, so at some point, are we gonna go to an automated billing system as the city grows?
We're gonna have to at some point.
I can see this being also a big influence also on, on our new staff, so. Uh, that's the questions I had.
And to get, get to your point on the billing system, then the bills will reflect the additional staff cost to do that. So it'll pay for itself, but at some point, we will have to go to an automated system.
I'm more worried about the abilities, you know, the staffing abilities, so, we ain't got time here, but.
I have one question, more question, and this may be for staff or for the attorney. Um, whose responsibility would it be to put a crosswalk or a tunnel or a bridge for pedestrians to get from one side of sixty-five to the other? Would that be the state, the county, the city?
Mendot.
Correct.
Mendot, and would the council be responsible for requesting that because, or would they be, would it have to require a study, or what would require that? Because I can just foresee pedestrians wanting to go over to that theater and passing the, and people in the apartments coming over to visit friends and stuff in that, when school starts and all that kind of stuff.
Well, it would have to come from a study of some sort. Unfortunately, East Bethel, because of the way Highway sixty-five is, is not what's called a walkable city. And in order to have a crosswalk, we're gonna have to have a traffic signal. So you can't have a crosswalk without the traffic signal, but there would have to be some sort of study that would be prepared to justify that need for the crosswalk and the traffic signal or a pedestrian bridge.
Okay. And so would the council request that to Mendot, or would the,
No, they, they.
Would there need to be accidents to, for it to happen? I, I'm just wondering how that would be.
They, they could request that Mendot provide some direction on there, but Mendot would probably come back and say, you know, you need to do the study to make sure that that's justified.
Okay.
Whether Mendot would do it now, or whether we'd have to hire somebody to do it is yet to be determined. But there would have to be a study performed to justify either way, whether it be an at-grade pedestrian crossing or a bridge.
Okay, thanks.
Why don't you just get that bridge? Get that twenty-five million and get a bridge, like we asked for a long time ago, and they said no.
Well, and they're gonna keep saying no for about the next fifty years too, unfortunately.
I know St. Francis couldn't get one either.
Yeah.
Okay, is there another discussion?
Uh, oh. Mayor and council, I just wanted to point out, when I heard the, the motion being made for preliminary plat approval, uh, for the second phase of the Elevage Development, um, the, there are two resolutions in, in your packet. One is Resolution twenty-two-two-seventy-one, which relates to amending the master PUD agreement to reflect the changes in design here, and the second resolution, um, is the one approving the preliminary plat. So we've, we've taken them out of order, um, based on how they are in your packet, and I just wanted the council to be aware of that.
And I, I will make those recommendations when we get ready to decide what we're gonna do. I have those listed separately.
Well, I was gonna make a motion to amend to clarify the motion as, uh, consistent with Resolution twenty-two-two dash seventy-two?
Seventy-two is a preliminary plat approval, correct.
Uh, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? To, to the motion to amend, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes, uh, back to the original motion as amended. I'm gonna make a motion to amend, uh, just for clarification that on the preliminary plat drawing, that lot, I can't see it now.
Lot one.
Lot A.
Lot one Block Eight
Yeah.
Uh, be deleted, and that entire area be designated as commercial Outlet A. Is there a second to that motion? Motion made, second discussion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion passes, now, uh, back to the original motion as tabled, or as amended twice. Any further discussion?
So the original motion?
This is motion, it's for Resolution twenty-two-two dash seventy-two with the amendment
Okay.
of deleting Block Eight.
For approval, okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, that motion passes. So now we need a motion on Resolution twenty-two-two dash seventy-one.
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash seventy-one, Resolution approving planned unit development, master plan amendment for Elevage EB Development. Second.
Motion made, second discussion. Chris, with, with making an amendment with that Block Eight, does it change anything with regards to Resolution seventy-one?
Uh, seventy-two?
Seventy-two?
Yeah.
No, this motion is for seventy-one.
Seventy-one, yeah, I, I believe all this motion will do is update the master, uh, development agreement for the entire PUD to reflect the changes shown in Phase Two.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Get some iron out there. It's been a long time going, so. Thank you, Cory. All right, on to department reports, Jack.
Item seventy-one, December work meeting. Our monthly work meeting is scheduled for Monday, December fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven PM. The following items are recommended for discussion. I'd like to recommend we enter, start a discussion on fire department staffing review. This is a discussion that will probably continue over into January and February, and I will invite new council members that will be sworn in in January to attend the meeting so they can hear the discussion. Uh, but this is something that Rod referred to, and we're going back and trying to determine what we can do to be prepared to staff these day calls that we have. Uh, some of it may even involve the hiring of a new person or a rotational shift. We're gonna explore some of the various ways that we can address this. I'd like that to be part of the work meeting for December the fifth. It won't be presented for any council action until probably February or March, but with something that won't be able to be decided in one meeting either. So I'd like that to be one of them, and then the Elevage Developers Agreement, which Chris has been working on and has provided some edits, will be part of the discussion too. Cory will be here to go over or answer any questions on that. And then this can be presented to council along with the preliminary plat at the December twelfth meeting.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to set the agenda for December's work meeting as described in our packet, Items One and Two, Fire Department Staffing Review and Elevage Developers Agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion made, second discussion.
I have a question. I'm not gonna be here. Should I vote on it, or should I abstain?
If you're not gonna be there.
Doesn't matter?
You can still vote, you can still vote on it, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
You never know, you might be there.
Have a funeral.
Might change your mind.
I have a funeral to go to, sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion passes. Uh, staff report, Jack.
I have nothing further to add to that.
Okay, uh, council reports, Brian.
Well, last October's planning meeting was canceled for, sorry, November's.
Yeah.
November's.
November's, because it's almost December, November's planning.
Next year.
No, yep, November's planning was canceled. Uh, we had a EDA meeting, but nothing big of note. What happened there is just a business activity report. And chances are it's looking like the December EDA meeting will be canceled and possibly the planning meeting as well. So other than that, I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving and still has some leftovers to take home.
All right, Kevin.
For the Park Commission, uh, this is my first time doing this, so I don't know how much detail you want, but, uh, as far as re- recovering the parking lot at Coon Lake Beach, uh, they're going to meet with the, uh, Coon Lake Beach Center Group before they determine whether that's a good project to go ahead with. And I've noticed that the tree work has already been taking place at the park down there that the smoke team is gonna be playing at. And, uh, that was about it. It was pretty, pretty brief.
Okay, I was worried because you got a lot of notes there. Suzanne.
All right, I haven't attended any meetings. There were none to attend, but I do wanna let people know, there are some really good Christmas light shows out there right now, some off of Viking. Um, there's some other addresses, so you can just go on the East Bethel website, Facebook pages, if you wanna find out where they are. Uh, but they're pretty awesome. And also, I've been talking about a toy drive. Well, the Lions seem to have a toy drive, and there's a box out here. So when y'all come up here, bring a toy, throw it in the box, and help some more unfortunate. Uh, with that, that's all I have.
Tim.
Uh, the only thing I have is, uh, December tenth, the fire department's gonna do their annual food drive through the neighborhoods. I would go on the city website and look because they've changed a couple of the routes. I think on social media, they got routes on there, but they have changed them, so. It'll be, it starts at five o'clock on December tenth and see what neighborhoods they go through. That's all I've got.
And I have nothing tonight, so with that, take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion adjourn.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion passes, our meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Good meeting.